Okay, Clark Regona, could you?
We're called the City Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join the council for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, Mayor Marquez is not here. He is ill, so we would need a motion from the floor for Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Belzak, do I have a second? Shower, and I'll do the roll call. Belzak?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
No, not here. Agree.
Aye.
We're doing for Mayor Pro Tem. This is not roll call.
Yeah, I didn't hear the name, so my apologies.
I didn't say his name, that's why I was waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm nominating Alderman Joe Kenny for Mayor Pro Tem for this evening.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, thank you. And it's probably redundant, but we will do the roll call. Joanne, do the roll, please.
Belzak?
Here.
Clistic?
Here.
Gustafson?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Sullivan? Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you very much. This is the part of the meeting where we can take questions from the audience on any announcements or anything that might be on the agenda tonight. Something might get voted on that you were not being able to stay for the whole meeting. You get three minutes to speak at this time. Okay, we have one person?
Can you pull the microphone down? Yes, I'm going first because no one else wanted to go first.
And we're gonna allow you for three minutes, ma'am, okay?
Yep, my name is Megan Hoffbauer. My husband grew up in the Hinswood subdivision, and when it was time for us to sell our home in Naperville, we chose to buy here in Darien, knowing it's a nice place to live and raise our three young children. We found an amazing community of neighbors in the patio homes and have enjoyed being closer to family. Last winter, we had one consistent issue every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night: the bass from the music at Q Bar could be felt inside our home. I contemplated reaching out to Q Bar or the police at the time, but we had just moved in, and I thought, maybe it was just us. We suffered through the loss of sleep and interruption into our lives, hoping that it would get better. Over the summer, it was better on most nights. The nights when the music was loud, I could drown it out with a noise machine, and thankfully, we couldn't feel the bass. Unfortunately, as the weather has gotten cold, we are again dealing with the bass at Q Bar being too loud. I've called and messaged Q Bar with no results. I resorted to contacting the police a few weeks ago, twice. Each night I spoke to the police, they were able to get Q Bar to lower the volume of the bass, but it would only help for that night. After speaking to my neighbors, some of which are here tonight, it turns out that I'm not the only one. It's not just my family. This issue has been apparently been happening and ongoing for winters, for several years, every winter. One neighbor who couldn't be here tonight because her whole family is sick stated, quote, "It gets to the point every winter that I kind of dread bedtime on the weekends," unquote. The issue impacts about a dozen homes, which includes at least a dozen children, and families that include essential workers from the medical and law enforcement communities. The negative impacts of lost sleep affect school, work, and home life. The best way to describe feeling the bass from Q Bar is a pulsating headache all over my body. We do not want to negatively impact Q Bar and their business. We are simply asking that the city council helps its residents in the matter so that businesses and residential communities can coexist peacefully. And just to give you some clarification, like to put things into context, the city of Chicago has an ordinance where anything over 60 decibels outside of business is not allowed. And the city of Aurora has an ordinance that a business cannot emit sound beyond 75 feet of its boundaries when it's adjacent to a residential community. My home is 900 feet from Q Bar, and the sound actually travels over 1,500 feet away to Portsmouth Drive in Hinswood. So I'm gonna be honest, I didn't want to be here. I didn't want to have to come. I hate public speaking. I'm shaking right now. But I saw how things unfolded over the summer, and I don't want things to go that way. I just felt like I had no other alternative but to turn to the city council for help in this matter, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Do we have any more communications from the audience?
Good evening, I'm Janet Tungit. I lived in Darien now for over, well, I guess about 40 years. And I'm past chamber president, and I'm the past chairperson of the Darien Fest, and I also did nine years of the entertainment for the Darien Fest. So I have a little bit of knowledge about music and bass. What Megan was talking about, and I live in the same community that she is in, in the patio homes, she's not joking, this is ridiculous. Anybody here, raise your hand, please. Have you ever been on the street, driving your car, parked at a stoplight, and somebody pulls up next to you? Let's say it's a Thunderbird from the 70s, and it's got glass packs, and they rev that engine, and it shakes the inside of the car. Or how about the car that goes and it's got the sub roofers inside the trunk, and those sub roofers are going so loud and so deep with the bass that it shakes your head, it shakes your teeth, and you're just sitting there, driving along, right? And it's aggravating and irritating. Oh, it might be fun for a minute or two, but it's not fun if you have to have it for a couple of hours in a row. This is what we're dealing with. We're not asking them to stop the music. We want them to succeed in their business. Just for Pete's sake, they don't need to have the bass that low. When I was doing Darien Fest, and we had the, now, Joe, you know this, and Dan, you know this too, from Darien Fest, back in the day, when we would have the fest over at the Darien Park over there by the library, the people that lived across the street and along the sides, Joanne Coleman, when she was, she lives right there, she used to be the secretary here, they would say to us, "Can you just fix the bass?" They didn't care about the music, they cared about the bass. So, as Megan Trainor would say, it's all about the bass. Thank you very much.
You beat me to that joke. Okay, do we have any, do we have any more audience members that'd like to speak? Okay, with that, we'll go into approval of minutes, goal-setting session from November 8, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve? I have approval from Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. The roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. City Council, November 15, 2021 minutes, do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion? With that, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. We're moved now to receiving of communications. Do any of the alderpeople have communications to share? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Joe. I did receive a communication from Marian Mel Gregory, along with Chris Snow, who are residents of the Carriage Greens community and serve on their homeowners association. They've expressed concern about a couple of matters. First one being the fencing in the area along North Frontage Road over by the Carmelite area. The temporary fence was up for an extensive period of time. The good news is, they have put up the typical fencing again, has been replaced and put in its place. And I know Dan Gombeck has been in communications with the Illinois Department of Transportation since they manage that roadway about exploring, you know, the safety protocols and some additional things that could be put in place to slow people down and protect drivers along that roadway. Secondly, they've expressed concern about a ComEd pole that resides along Frontage Road closer to the Villas of Carriage Greens. It's been tagged to be replaced, but it just keeps leaning and leaning, so that's been notified by ComEd to figure out what's going on with that and get that replaced. And lastly, a speed limit sign that had been hit and was, you know, taken out along Frontage Road by Carriage Greens, they've asked that it be replaced as well.
Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Kenny. I received a communication from Megan Hoffbauer, and I asked her to come and other residents to come because earlier today, I actually talked to the Q Bar owner, Mr. Thaft, and one of the things I learned in engineering, you want to get to the base and sort of understand some of this history, and one of the things he did mention that he's been here 10 years and it was never an issue. That's sort of his argument. And I mentioned, you know, residents have brought this up, this has been an issue for quite a while. He's like, "No, it hasn't." So I welcomed residents, I welcome coming to city council and speaking tonight, because everyone's under assumption that it just really happened just recently. And obviously, this has been going on for quite a while, and this is why I support looking into this, because obviously, a lot of residents came out today to speak about this, and it's something that's been going on, going for a while. I feel that this wasn't addressed, and so people just sort of ignored it and dealt with it. And I feel that no residents should lose sleep, especially a police officer, medical personnel, or any parent or the kids lose sleep over loud music. And so I'm glad they showed up. So, you know, we'll keep looking at it, see what we can do, come to a resolution. One thought is, potentially, I mentioned to Bob if he could come forward with maybe a resolution to Economic Development Council to put in better soundproofing in the building, sort of maybe some upgrades. I think a lot of residents would support that. I would support that for a plan, if you did an analysis of the location, so. No, thanks for coming up, definitely, this seems to have been going on for quite a while. Second item, I noticed or realized this weekend, there was another accident at 67th and Clarendon Hills. I just want to officially go on the record, it would support a stoplight at the intersection during goal session, or we talked about improvements that we did, we've done a lot of improvements, and they just don't seem to really address the issue. So I'd like to go on the record and support Alderman Vaughn putting a stoplight at that intersection and look at during budget season, have discussion, hopefully, other aldermen and elder persons support for a stoplight at that intersection. My understanding is there's still some funds from COVID relief that we have available that we could potentially use for a stoplight there?
Well, as we get into the budget in February, we'll have, you'll have a better picture of whatever funds, whether it's COVID or additional transfer, but you'll have a better idea of the funds and the projects to come forward, yes.
Yeah, and I know it's expensive, but, you know, it seems to be coming up and up and up, so just put it out there, that would support a stoplight there. That is all.
Any other communications?
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up as well. Thank you for your support, Alderman Clistic. The accident happened probably yesterday about 3:00, 3:15 PM. It was a really bad accident, the lady went right directly into a pole, and I think that, you know, anything that we can do to make this intersection better, it'll improve our status with the residents on that street, with the visibility issues from the north and south, and leading up to those intersections, there's no way to know that you are coming up to a four-way intersection. There's no sign, there's no signage, so I think it'll be helpful to adding signage, possible stoplight or stop sign, and to control the ebbs and flow of traffic coming from the north and south. So I think having your support as a council would be very important to this intersection. I know that we have our goal setting, and we have our budget meeting coming up, so hopefully, we can put this in the budget and really just mitigate the whole situation. Not that it'll prevent all accidents, but anything that we can do to make it better, I think we should do it, so. Alderman, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Kenny mentioned one time, we have no guarantee for a fixed intersection, but we do have a guarantee this will continue on if we do nothing.
Have we looked into any type of federal grants for a light there?
Yes.
What have we found?
It does not qualify.
Okay.
Can you give me a reason why it doesn't qualify, Dan?
Counts, traffic counts, certain conditions, has to follow a criteria to help it be funded through the federal government. We do have the ability, as a municipality, to install it if we wanted to.
But is it gonna, and a real, a little background, it took me five, six years to fight to get the light at Bailey Road in Plainfield, okay? And we went through counts, and we finally got the count status approved by the feds for a $1.1 million light. What'd we get, $850,000, I think?
750, I think.
Was it 750? Okay. Do we know what a cost of the light would be for this location? Any idea?
Non-funded, meaning non-federally funded, it would be about 350, 350 to 400,000. If it was federally funded, it would be basically double because of certain protocols that need to be followed.
Okay.
And here's how I feel on that issue too, about cost. If we can give Carriage Greens $366,000, we can fund a, we can fund a street light or a stop sign at this intersection, point blank. We wrote him a blank check. For what? We wrote him a check.
My credit. Go ahead, go ahead, Treasure Corn, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn, I just can't let you get by with making a statement like that. We did advance them $366,000, but it is a loan, they're repaying back by accelerated additional revenues that we're getting from there.
I understand that.
So it's not just a giving the money away, so I just want to make sure the audience is clear on that, as they see that. They did get the money, but it is a loan, and they've already started paying it back, actually.
And that's great, I respect, thank you. Yeah, we did write him a check, $366,000. But it doesn't save any lives, so that's a point.
I have one communication from Terrence Newman, a Darien resident, regarding his displeasure with some of the books that are at the District 99 Library at the South and Thomas Grove North. That brings us to the mayor's report, and it's, you know, my pleasure to bring the House Decorating Committee to announce our winners of this year's decorating contest winners for 2021.
Pro Tem Mayor and Council, at this time, I'd like to read off the winners of the Decorating Committee. We did have 49 nominations this year, so it was, I believe Diane Obarini said that was an all-time record, so we're pretty happy about that. We did spend over, I think with our group, over five hours looking at houses, and had a heck of a time trying to decide who was gonna be winning and honorable mentions. So I'm gonna start with our honorable mentions. The first one is at 2900 Hillside Lane. It's decorated by Nick and Michelle Squares. This is a very nice display. When I came to the door, I noticed that Nick and Michelle had set a basket out of snacks and soft drinks for all the delivery people who are working so hard this time of year. Nick told me that the decorations are a composite of decorations from relatives, Nick's grandfather, Michelle's grandmother, and her uncle, all of whom have passed on. What a nice way to remember those beloved family members. This display was one of the few we saw that provided us with sound, of course, Christmas carols. The decorations included a Santa, a snowman, a wreath, and a multitude of lights on lawns and roof lines. Lighted snowflakes were twinkling, the decorations are coordinated with that of their neighbors. Thanks, Michelle and Nick, for a wonderful display and spreading holiday cheer.
Are they here?
Next display is at 70...
There's...
The next display is at 7302 Bunker Road. It was decorated by Richard and Heather Girardi. The display is an extensive light show. The Girardis have lived at this address for 10 years. This is their second Darien address. I spoke to Heather's parents when I visited, and they told me that the desire to decorate is shared by both Heather and Richard. This house has lights on the house and across the roof line, with an outline of a tree traced with lights on the side, excuse me, of the garage. Reese and Garland were everywhere, and multiple trees are covered in red and green lights. Solar lights lie in the driveway. Two Christmas trees inside the house are visible through the windows. Thank you, Richard and Heather, for this beautiful display. I don't know if they're here.
They're here?
Thank you.
Do you want to come up? Do you want to come up?
We're gonna wait. The next house, next house is at 7809 Farmingdale. Its owners are Brent and Gabby Walker. They have lived in Darien just over 16 months. Brent has been decorating for as long as he can remember. This house features a true vintage Christmas with a 30-foot Santa sleigh and reindeer slung over the house, over the front yard, literally over the front yard. It's really something to see, with a lighted square landing pad below. Vintage blow-molded soldiers and candles lie in the driveway with a vintage Santa overseeing the front yard. Being this house is on the corner, Brent completely lit up the entire side and back with the yard, well, back of his yard with approximately 5,000 lights. This house receives honorable mention, and thank you, Brent, for your fun display. It's a lot of fun. I don't know if he's here, but... All right. The next house is at 7810 Lyman, which is owned by Dr. Robert and Susan Oslick. They are the original owners and have lived in Darien for 37 years. Their son Ryan, who's from New York, decided to decorate for them. But the entire front of the house is covered in lights, but what really makes this house stand out is the way Ryan wrapped the trees and the lights in the front yard. Each of the three large trees was meticulously wrapped, branch at a time, with red, purple, and white lights. Ryan said he just kept buying lights, and his motto is, "The more lights, the better." And the decorating team agrees, it was really beautiful. Thank you, Ryan, and Oslick family, I think they're here, yeah.
We have certificates.
We're gonna wait till the, we're gonna do it then.
Come on, Joe.
The next house is located at 533 73rd Street and is owned by Jim and Kerry Kaiser, and I know they're here tonight. They have lived in Darien for 35 years, and at this house for 28. They both loved to decorate and have won third place in '97 and second place in 2003. Jim was also on the decorating committee for the last 10 years. The property is 2/3 of an acre. The yard is lined in colored lights front to back, which is in the middle, which in the middle features a Christmas carousel, lighted bells, and numerous fun blowups. With so many lights outlining the house, the large yard is one of the brightest displays we had seen in town. This house receives honorable mention, and thank you, Jim and Kerry, it's really a fun display.
When do you think you can give the certificates?
I just want to acknowledge too...
When she's done.
In case anybody didn't know, this is Steve Warnicki, he's new to the committee this year. This is Leslie Sweeney, and this is Tracy Thompson, and we were all, it was a new experience for us, we looked at everything through new eyes, and boy, did we look at a lot of lights.
Could we do something before you, before you get going? Could we get your honorable mentions all up in one, you know, one, right now? Just so we can take a shot with them, because since the mayor's not here today? Honorable mentions, come on up.
Howdy, neighbor.
All right. 73rd Street, Mr. Kaiser. Thank you, Dwight. Thank you, sir. Do I have Lyman? Lyman, here we go. And Farmingdale Drive?
Great sweater, Joe.
Go. Bunker Road? And I believe Hillside Lane is not here this evening, correct? Okay. Right.
Hold up your certificates. Wonderful.
As you, as you're announcing, as you're, we're gonna, we're gonna have them come up one by one now, okay?
Sounds good. So moving forward, how's that? Can you hear me? Yeah. Moving forward, then, we chose houses 1 through 5, and starting with number 5, the house, the next house we chose was at 7718 Sawyer Road, and it's owned by Sherri and Pat Gillespie. And Sherri and Pat have lived in Darien for 49 years. Sherri has won Best Decorated in 2018 and fourth place in 2015. Obviously, she's been decorating a long time, and she's also been instrumental in organizing the entire block decorating, which won the Best Decorated Block in 2018 and 2019. This year, Sherri's outdoor landscaping was completely redone, which created a new challenge. It takes, when you do these massive decoration things, it takes a while to see how it's going to go. The results in the theme were very tasteful and elegant, with appropriate lighting on the bushes and light garland across the entire roof line. There's a juggling snowman on the side of the house. This house was our fifth place winner. Sherri's here tonight. If she's watching, we thank her very much. The next house is a house at 1508 Willow Creek Road. It's owned by Brian and Amy Coletta, and they've lived in Darien for 16 years. And Brian's mom always decorated when he was growing up, and now Brian and his son Matt are keeping up the family tradition. Their house features a 40-foot pine tree in the front yard, completely lit from top to bottom with large bright lights. A homemade nativity scene made by Brian with a star that flashes at the top. There's a handmade Christmas tree lot made by Matt. The house is adorned with bright lights across the top, with the compliment of red lights on all the bushes. This is our fourth place winner.
I've heard friends and a resident of mine, they said, "Please, thank you very much for the honor if they were to receive a recognition."
Okay, all right. Okay. Our number three award goes to the house at 621 Maple Lane, decorated by Matt and Rebecca Hariska. I don't see them. Matt and Rebecca and their two children are ages five and two, and have lived at this house for only six years. Matt says he decorated for Christmas when he was growing up. He outlined every eve and angle he could find on this house, and each light string was absolutely straight as an arrow, which was amazing, because it's really a hard thing to achieve. He's got trees, elves, Santa's reindeer, and the Grinch. Lights outline the front lawn, there's an elf with a cup of hot chocolate, a truck bringing home a tree, and a dinosaur with a present in its mouth. So thank you, Hariska family, for such a lovely display. Our number two winner tonight, it's from 11768 Street, decorated by Sherri Wilson and Aaron Peterson. I do believe they are here. Sherri tells me she's lived at this address for approximately 20 years. Aaron said he did the physical setup and Sherri had the ideas. This house appears like a Christmas card. I mean, we looked at it, it looked just like, just like a card. They've got a theme of Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, the cast of characters is well-represented, they've got everybody from that, Rudolph, Clarice, the Abominable Snowman, Cornelius, the Misfit Toys, and even one I forgot about, King Moon Racer, who rules the land of Misfit Toys. Candy canes lie in the driveway, snowflakes twinkling in the trees, and tiny little lighted trees are spread out across the lawn. It's a beautiful display for adults to see, and a charming one for kids as well. So thank you, Sherri and Aaron. I think we need to thank everybody who decorates to this level, to this extent, because we all benefit from it, from their work.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Nice job.
That's second place. Our number one winner, and this was, these were all tough decisions to make, but this one clicked every box, checked every box. We were just awestricken by it. 1614 Darien Club Drive, decorated by Alan and Yolanta McNehey, and I know they're here. I can't even describe how, how beautiful this house looks. They moved into this home just in 2019. They've got two children, ages nine and 10. They said they always planned to decorate for the holidays, and the move to the house in Darien provided that opportunity. Their decorations are extraordinary. I mean, the front of the house is lined with lights with an arch over the door. There's a large Santa sleigh, reindeer, and lighted soldiers in the front yard. There's a decorated tree visible through the front window. The back of the house is just as stunning as the front. You can see it. It, it looks like a miniature arboretum back there. White mini lights, blue, purple, and green floodlights illuminate the trees. Yolanta says Alan's the designer of the display and she helps with the setup. This house is a must-see if you're out driving in Darien. 1614 Darien Club Drive, it's, it's, thank you, McNehey family, for sharing all this with us. You know, if your spouses see this, they're going to want you to do this, too. It's gorgeous.
I'm here to announce the block winner, which is 7700 Sawyer Road. Be sure to treat yourself to this holiday season, season to a drive down this block on Sawyer. Thirty-six of the 46 houses are decorated. The whole street sparkles. Sherri Gillespie is one of the driving forces on this achievement and is our own committee mem, as is our own committee member, Steve Warnicki. I would like to encourage other blocks to join in this competition. It would be great to see other entries in the decorated block contest. Only, it only requires five houses in a row to be considered.
Yeah, we'd like to see some more people showing up. They're closed.
May I have an applause for the committee for doing such a fine job? Absolutely. Okay, as we move on to our agenda, the city clerks report.
Let's wait a minute.
I didn't realize they were doing that. Good job.
Can't see anyone, perfect.
Should we move it over?
The cameras, I wonder if the camera's not picking up these guys.
I put the easel there, so that's my, Dan will move it over with you. So, that's.
You don't see me worried.
There you go.
Let me ask for a quick.
Sure.
So, this is going to be posted, if somebody asked me if the addresses would be posted so that people could go around and see them, because we don't have a tour bus this year or anything like that.
They did it last year. They posted the addresses and the, the, the award winners. They put it on Direct Connect.
And I think the pictures usually go on, too. So, they're sending those over to Diane Novarini, I think. Right? No?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let me try, let me try this again. Clerks report.
Couple of announcements. Darien City Offices will be closed on Friday, December 24th, and on Monday, December 27th, in observance of Christmas. And the offices will also be closed on Friday, December 31st, for the New Year's holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. City administrators report.
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Department heads, police department monthly report.
No report, but I'll answer any questions anybody may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Thomas this evening?
I do.
Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, chief. I know we still have an issue with the Cadillac converters now, the thefts of those. And I saw that various communities such as Evanston, they're going, actually painting initials on the Cadillac converters, and I don't know if that actually can help. Now, one of the things I did see, and I have contacted some of the, the political folks in, in the state of Illinois here, is that, and the state of Washington, the state of Washington is actually passing legislation to ban, they only have commercial businesses able to sell, sell the actual catalytic converters. So, I'm not sure, too, if something like that on a statewide level would help, but I think there's, I don't know if there's anything that you can think of that we can do as a community or even as a state to try to cut back on, because the only way to avoid it is to put your car in the garage. That's the only way to prevent it at this point, I think.
Yes, and Alderman had previously sent me an email to discuss this topic, so I had the deputy chief contact Evanston and I believe it's St. Paul.
Yep, yep.
And both of those agencies have done something with identifying catalytic converters while they're still on the vehicle. I just got a PowerPoint that St. Paul put together. I looked at it for probably 15 minutes before coming to the meeting because I had just got it like about 6:30.
Hey, Mike.
There's a number of items beyond just painting or initialing the catalytic converter. Talk about similar with parking in the garage, parking in an area where you can't get under the vehicle. They discussed higher vehicles such as four-wheel-drive trucks and those type of things. So, there's, it's quite extensive, so I didn't have a chance to get through that totally. I will get through that and make some recommendations about catalytic converters and those type of things. They did talk about the public appreciation. They did not get into too much about results, about whether or not the programs have actually worked to reduce thefts. So, that was one of my comments to the deputy chief to figure out the proper measure, because you can measure how many vehicles got stamped and it doesn't matter.
Yeah, right.
And you can measure the results about less catalytic converter thefts and go from there. So, anyway, there's more to look at, and so I'll get that done and we'll make some recommendations.
Okay.
As to the statewide stuff, I worked on a similar project in Aurora where we passed an ordinance about recyclers, ponds, and resale, and used a program that we call Leads Online. And the state did pass some things similar to what we did in Aurora, so I'll have to give that another look to refresh my memory because it's probably been 10 years or plus.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir. Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Quick question, Al, Damer was chatting with me. I noticed in one of police reports, we had four incidents of theft at Walmart, and the concern is if your officers are tied up at Walmart quite often, is there a safety or delayed response time, for example, to an accident on 67th and Claretton Hills on the other side of town while you're dealing with thefts at Walmart? I mean, if you have four at the same time, you have two officers there, or three, is there any concern of safety or is there like a point where that they allocate too many resources for theft at Walmart? And, you know, taxpayers are paying for it. I noticed that Willowbrook Target, they have their own security guard chatting with the manager there, and they mentioned Willowbrook stops maybe once every other day, every third day. So, residents, we're just wondering if it's a safety concern if our police are at Walmart all the time?
There's a lot in that question. Should they be concerned about manpower because somebody, an officer is out on a theft report? The answer is no. There's, we don't put our manpower based on a single incident. We base our manpower on calls for service generated by the citizens calling the police, and then look at seasonality, day of the week, hour of the day, a bunch of different analysis to determine how many officers are needed for operations, and look at the time that an officer is tied up on some type of activity, regardless of what that is. In regards to being at a different location, there's three districts within, patrol districts within the city. Each one of those patrol districts are manned to a couple of deep, and so an officer, we try not to, but depending on the call for service, we may be able to hold that call. So, if it's a report-type call or non-emergency call, we try to hold that call for the district officer. If that's not possible, accident with injury, or if there's an arrest or evidence that could be lost, those type of things, then we will immediately dispatch a car from another district to that other district in order to make sure that we're not holding calls on emergency type situations.
Chief, do we handle all the traffic, I'll call it accidents for lack of a better term, on Claretton Hills Road? Because like I know for, I believe that like for example, 75th Street, something happens on 75th Street, even if it's us, Downers Grove pretty much takes the paper on that. Is it the same way with, you know, any other bordering towns?
It depends, and for a specific answer to 67th and Claretton Hill Road, I don't know that answer. I can check. The issue with jurisdiction at an intersection is depending on first agency to that intersection typically has jurisdiction until the other, another jurisdiction comes up there. Then a lot of times they'll move to center line versus side of the road. It's very frustrating because then you have to determine a lot of different things within that intersection about where the first contact occurred and who's got jurisdiction. It's much easier for one agency to take those accident reports and just have a gentleman's agreement or a MOU between agencies about who's going to handle that call for service.
Thank you. Anything else for the chief? Municipal Services, Mr. Gombach, do you have anything this evening, sir?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move to the treasuries report. Treasurer Corin.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, this evening we've got two warrants. First of all, I'm going to request council's approval of warrant number 212215, in the amount of $793,894.48 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the two periods ended November 18th, '21, and December 2nd, '21, in the amount of $644,310.20, for a total be approved of $1,438,204.68.
Do I have a motion to approve? I got it first by Alderman Sullivan, second by Alderman Vaughn. Is this discussion? The roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next requesting council's approval of warrant number 212216, in the amount of $451,636.89 from the listed funds and payroll for the period ended December 16th, '21, in the amount of $266,658.99, for a total be approved of $718,295.88.
Do I have a motion to approve? I have first by Alderman Shower, second by Alderman Belzak. Discussion? With none, the roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the revenue and expenditure report for the seven months ended November 30th, '21, reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of $11,532,401, expenses of $8,345,883, for a current balance of $5,747,979. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $4,67,369, expenses of $3,825,305, current balance of Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $762,036, expenses of $1,369,184, for a current balance of $759,175. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $1,135, expenses of $159,616, current balance of $2,936,888. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $1,702,000, expenses of $1,306,935, current balance of $10,409,633.
Thank you, Mike. Standing committee reports. Any of my chairs have reports? Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The municipal services committee will be conducting a meeting next week due to the holiday on the Monday. It will be on Tuesday, the 28th, at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
The Economic Development Committee will meet on Thursday, January 6th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in council's chambers, and the Administrative Finance Committee will next meet on Monday, February 7th, at 6:00 PM in the upstairs conference room at City Hall.
Thank you. The police committee meeting was canceled this evening due to lack of agenda items. The next one is slated for Monday, January 17th, 6:00 PM, across this parking lot in the police training room. Do we have any questions from the audience? There is no audience? We will, we will move, we will move on. Old business or being no old business, we'll move to consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, just give me, just give me a second here.
I'm going to get a cup of coffee.
A through Z. Wow. Holy cow.
And here we go. Our consent agenda this evening, ladies and gentlemen. Item number A is going to be a consideration of a motion granting a waiver of the raffle license bond requirement for the Darien Alliance Club. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Tiles and Style LLC doing business as Taza, supplies for Potomac products as required for various public works projects in the specific unit pricing. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for culvert metal pipes, metal bands, and metal flared end sections and fittings is required for various public works projects for a period of May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2023. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from 119 Street Materials, formerly Wilco Green LLC, for tipping and transfer fees at the proposed unit prices for certain generated waste from various public works projects. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from the Core and Main for high-density polyethylene pipes, better known as HDPP, bands, flared end sections, and fittings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May 1st, 2022 through April 20th, 2023. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for pressure pipes is required for various public works projects at the proposed unit pricing for a period of May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2023. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for storm sewer structures, iron sewer grates, concrete adjusting rings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2023. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from JC Landscaping and Tree Services at the schedule of prices for the placement of topsoil and for the purchase and placement of fertilizer and sod for landscape restoration services for a period of May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2023. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from JC Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Shrev Services Incorporated for topsoil at the specific unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting proposal from Core and Main for Smith &amp; Blair Stainless Steel Water Main Repair Clamps, style 226, with stainless steel bolts for the maintenance of the water system at the proposed unit pricing of a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item K, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main for Smith &amp; Blair Stainless Steel Water Main Repair Clamps, style 238, with stainless steel bolts at the proposed unit prices in various sizes for the maintenance of the water systems for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item L, a consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Zebel Water Services Products Incorporated for a Type K copper pipe for the maintenance of the water system for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item M, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for Mueller brand brass fittings at the proposed unit prices for the maintenance of the water system for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Consideration of a motion, item N, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main for general water department utilities, tools, and marking supplies for the maintenance of the water system for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item O, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main for general water department utility fixtures for the maintenance of the water system for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item P, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main for various water valves for the maintenance of the water system at the proposed unit price for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item Q, consideration of a motion to approve resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main for Mueller Supercentrian Fire Hydrants and Auxiliary Valves for the maintenance of the water system as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item R, consideration of a motion to approve resolution accepting a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for East Jordan CD250 Fire Hydrants, Valves, and Accessories at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item S, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Zebel Water Service Products Incorporated for waterous Pacer Fire Hydrants, Auxiliary Valves, and Accessories at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item T, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for Cloud Medallion Fire Hydrants, Auxiliary Valves, and Accessories at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item U, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for the Cloud Eddie Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item V, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Incorporated for the Cloud Medallion Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item W, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Zebel Water Service Products for the Travers City Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item X, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for the East Jordan Water Master 5BR250 and East Jordan Water Masters 5CD250 Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Item Y, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main for the Mueller Supercentrian Fire Hydrant Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. And last but not least, item Z, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main for the US Pipe Fire Hydrant Repair Parts as required for a period of May 1st, 2022, through April 30th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve?
I think you should read them all again.
Bravo, Joe.
I have a motion, I have a motion by Alderman Shower, second by Alderman Gustafson. The roll, please.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion is passed. New business, there being no new business, we move to questions, comments, announcements from our alderpeople. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor Joe Kenny, for the day. I just want to remind our community that the Citizen of the Year Committee is seeking nominations, and those nominations are due on January 6th. Many might ask, what is the goal of the Citizen of the Year Committee? And their goal is to search for a very special man or woman who has given themselves to make Darien a nice place to live. If you know of a person who goes above and beyond the call of duty, and I know we have many, many, many people like that in Darien, it's always that person that will lend a hand, step up and do and help their fellow man. They need to be a Darien resident. Please, please nominate them for the Citizen of the Year. You can go to the city website. It's under committees, and you can also find a quick link on Darien Direct Connect. But, you know, they're looking for diversity of activities, length of service, degree of involvement. Do not be intimidated by the nomination form. It does not take that long. Encourage others. If you've got a person that you think is a good idea, encourage others to also submit nominations for them. Everyone has a different perspective. We've got so many wonderful citizens in Darien that have impacted people in many different ways, and I think it's imperative that we get the recognition out to those folks. So, elected officials are not eligible, but pretty much everyone else in Darien who's a resident is. So, I encourage you, please reach out to me if you have any specific questions, or to other members of the committee. But take time over the holidays to reflect and make a difference in someone's life. January 6th, 2022 is the deadline. Thank you.
Do we know the date for the banquet? Put it on our calendars.
I don't have that yet, but I will let you know. I think, you know, they might, I think it's, I might have it. Hold on a second. I might have written it down. I apologize. I do have that. Friday, March 4th.
Perfect.
And it is at Alpine Banquets.
Awesome. Mark your calendars.
Alderman Shower.
Joe, terrific job today. Terrific.
Thank you, sir.
Bravo.
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays and have a safe and wonderful New Year.
And you beat me to it. I was gonna say, on behalf of Mayor Mark Case, who couldn't be here this evening, wish all you and your families a happy and safe, healthy Christmas and New Year. Do I have a motion without any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn? I've got it by Alderman Vaughn, second by Alderman Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Dismissed.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.